Good evening, and welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education General Meeting of April 18th, 2016. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to our meeting this evening. As you can see, we have a full house, a lot of very exciting things to cover this evening, a lot of folks being honored for some wonderful accomplishments throughout this past school year. If you are here in attendance this evening and you'd like to have an agenda, they can be found on the table just outside the door, feel free to take one, you can follow along. If you're watching from home, our agendas can be found on our website, you can find that at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab and drop down to agendas, you can find it and follow right along. This evening's meeting is a general meeting, or what we call a voting meeting. Just to bring you folks up to speed, in case you weren't watching the last couple of meetings, the items on our agenda that will be voted on this evening have typically been talked about at least two prior meetings, a study session and a committee of the whole. Therefore, you may or may not see the level of discussion that you would expect before some of these decisions are made. Please know that there has been some in-depth discussion before we got to tonight, to the point that we are ready to take a vote on these items. If you're interested in the conversation that the board has before they vote on various items, I really encourage you to either attend or tune in at home to our Committee of the Whole meetings. Those meetings, we take our topics, we dig into them very, very deeply. Frequently, we ask our administration to go back and get more information for us. We make sure everyone's questions and answers and concerns are satisfied before we bring it to a meeting such as this evening to vote on it tonight. Also, we do have, as I mentioned, several folks that we're honoring this evening. After Item 3E, after our honorees of the evening, we will be taking about a five to 10-minute recess so that we can congratulate our honorees, they can take some photographs if they'd like, and just wanted to let you folks know about that, so expect that little break in our evening. The next item on our agenda is Item 3A, Communications. Mrs. Jenkins, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you.
Okay. Good evening, President Burton, members of the board, Superintendent Opist. Tonight, we continue with our Student Art Gallery program, and it's my pleasure to highlight the works of students who are enrolled in Messina Ormsby's Graphic Design Course at the Livonia Career Technical Center. As we can see from the pieces of artwork on the board behind you, art is not always created with paint and canvas or pencil and sketch paper. These projects show how art is everywhere in our daily lives, from advertisements to restaurant menus or event posters, and we've got a little bit of everything up there. Because LCTC is a career-based program for juniors and seniors, these artists are learning and applying their artistic abilities to practical uses. At this time, I would like to introduce you to the five students who created the works of arts, the works that are on display in the board office for the next month. And each, as we do each month, each student receives a special certificate which reads, Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition, Student Art Gallery, Featured Artist, Selected to Represent the Livonia Career Technical Center's Graphic Arts Program at the Board of Education Office, April 18th, 2016. So our first honoree is Sophia Bastis, and Sophia is a Franklin High School senior. And there's so many people here tonight, oh, there we go. Come on up, Sophia.
Mrs. Jenkins, if I could interrupt you for just a moment, if you're a family member of one of our honorees and you'd like to take a photograph as they're getting their certificate, please feel free to move into a position that you can do that.
Absolutely. Sophia plans to attend the College for Creative Studies in Detroit, major in advertising design and minor in graphic design. Her graphic arts class at the Career Center is the first exposure that she's had in the field. That speaks a lot to the course she's enrolled in. She's also gaining practical experience in the Career Intern Program at the Career Center. She's currently doing layout and design work for the Schoolcraft College Student Newspaper, which is called the Schoolcraft Connection. It should also be noted that Sophia won a Gold Key Award in the Scholastic Arts Competition. Congratulations. And we always, Sophia, we always have our artists pick out their pieces, and if you feel comfortable saying a few words about your pieces, that would be fine too. Which ones do you have up there?
I have the one auto show poster, that's like the zigzag one.
Okay.
And then the one that I won a Gold Key Award for is the flower heads, well, the head of flowers.
Oh, okay.
That one's called "Whatever People Say I Am, That's What I'm Not." And I kind of describe it as, you don't really notice what's on the inside, you only kind of focus on what's on the outside, so you see it as like, you know, like a dull gray man, but on the inside, he's flourishing.
Very neat. That's beautiful. Thank you so much. If you'd like to just kind of hang out here with us, we will circle all five of you around the podium here. Next up, we have Kelsey Cunningham, and Kelsey is a senior at Stevenson High School. Kelsey out in the crowd. Oh, there we go. Here you are, congratulations. And which pieces are yours?
Um, the one on the end. The rainbow pink one, the purple and pink.
Okay. All right, and the top one is made, it's paint?
Um, it was a painted piece, and then I scanned it in.
Okay, very neat. I can circle you around here. Next up, we have William Callis, and Will is a senior at Stevenson.
And which pieces are yours? The piece that has the musician on it, and it's green, and it says Untitled, did that one. And then the one in the bottom left, it's Kanye West. And they're both inspired by recent albums.
Okay, very cool. Thank you. I should point out, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to go back to Kelsey. Kelsey is a second-year student in the Graphic Design Program, and she also takes traditional art classes at Stevenson High School. She plans to start her post-secondary education at Schoolcraft College. And Will is also a second-year student in the Graphic Design Program at the Career Center, and he hopes to attend the College for Creative Studies in Detroit and major in graphic design or advertising design. Okay? Next up, we have Hannah Pylin, and Hannah is a senior at Franklin. How much pieces are yours?
Um, the one on the bench.
Okay.
Photograph? Yes, the photograph.
Okay. Hannah plans to begin her college studies at Schoolcraft College and transfer to Wayne State, where she wants to pursue photojournalism. Very cool. She's been involved in the art programs in LPS since eighth grade, and photography is her favorite medium. She is gaining practical experience in this class, such as how to use Adobe Illustrator. That's an awesome skill. Okay, next up, we have Leland Rossi, and Leland is a senior at Churchill. There you are, and by process of elimination, we could guess, but I'll let you point out.
Top left, auto show poster, and the restaurant menu.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Leland has been taking art classes for several years, and his favorite medium to work in is ink and watercolor. Is that about right? I asked her teacher. He plans to begin his college studies at Schoolcraft College, and in this class, he's learned the basic principles of graphic design. So join me once again in congratulating these talented artists. I'd also like to point out the displays, the art displays in the lobby this month feature Franklin High School students' artwork and Kennedy Elementary. And one more note, also be sure to check out the hundreds of artworks on display from all around the district at the 40th Annual Fine Art Show, which opened last week and continues through the end of the month at the Livonia Civic Library. With that, thank you again.
I've said this each time that we have a Student Art Gallery presentation, it is truly amazing what our students can do, and most of us, I know from our conversations, most of us on this board, and I venture to say, most of this room can't even begin to do what our students are doing artistically, but it's amazing, and thank you for sharing your talents with us. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3B, Recognition of National Merit Scholars. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we're recognizing five students who were named finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Three students were first named semifinalists or commended status, I'm sorry, these students were named semifinalists or commended status in the fall, and those achievements were based on their scores on the PSAT, which is also known as the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Exam, which was administered during their junior year. They were among approximately 16,000 students nationally to continue on and compete for the 7,400 National Merit Scholarships, which were announced this spring. Let's put this into perspective. To be named a semifinalist, students must score in the top 1% of approximately 1.5 million students nationwide. With a commended designation, students score in the top 5% nationally. Each semifinalist submits a detailed scholarship application, which includes essays and information about extracurricular achievements, awards, and leadership positions. Semifinalists also have an outstanding academic record, and they're endorsed and recommended by a school official, and earn SAT scores that confirm their qualifying test performance. By the conclusion of the competition, a select group of finalists are chosen to receive scholarships totaling nearly $35 million. Awardees have the strongest combination of academic skills and achievements, extracurricular accomplishments, and potential for success in rigorous university studies. Scholarship winners represent fewer than 1% of the initial pool of student entrants. So let's meet these outstanding students now. We'll start with Ian Brinker, and Ian is, as he's making his way up, Ian is a senior at Stevenson High School, where he's in the Global Ed Program. A summa cum laude, is a member of National Honor Society, French Honor Society, I'm sorry, National Honor Society, French Honor Society, serves as drum major in the Stevenson High School Marching Band, plays in the Pitt Orchestra, is on the Quiz Bowl Varsity Team, and the Mid-America Model United Nations Team. He's also an Eagle Scout. Ian is the son of Dan and Laura, and he has two brothers, Elliot and Alec, and one adopted brother, whose name is Max, and he's a foreign exchange student from Hamburg, Germany. Welcome, Max. Ian received the Dean's Scholarship and Research Scholarship to study marine biology at Nova Southeastern University in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Congratulations, Ian. Next, we have Elizabeth Keebler. Welcome, Elizabeth. Elizabeth is a senior at Stevenson. Here's your certificate, which by the way, reads, Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition, Outstanding Achievement, National Merit Scholarship Finalist, selected by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation for Outstanding Academic Success and Personal Growth in Social and Leadership Endeavors. Okay, so stick around with me here. Elizabeth has been accepted at the University of Michigan, where she will major in Biology with a career goal of becoming a medical doctor. Elizabeth earned an academic letter during her junior year and is now taking advantage of online course offerings and dual enrollment, which means she's taking college classes as a high school student. She was one of 750 high school students worldwide to be accepted into Stanford University's Summer Program of High School Scholars. At Stanford, she lived in the dorms and attended college classes for credit. This was made possible by scholarships from Stanford and from the Joyce Ivy Foundation. Elizabeth's life passion is music. She plays the French horn and has played in the Livonia Youth Symphony, Detroit Metropolitan Youth Symphony, and the Adult Livonia Symphony Orchestra. She's also traveled with Blue Lake International on a four-week tour of Europe. She's a Joyce Ivy Foundation Fellow and a Stanford Circle Lead. On the weekends when she isn't performing, she volunteers at the Michigan Humane Society. She's the daughter of Dr. Frederick Keebler and Katie Keebler, who is a teacher in Dearborn Public Schools. She has a sister named Stephanie, who is a sixth grader at Riley. Congratulations, did I cover it all? Next, we're recognizing Angelika Zo. Angelika? Come on down, as they say. Angelika is a senior in the Math, Science, and Computers Program at Churchill High School. She is a National AP Scholar, was in the Michigan Mathematics Prize Competition, top 200. She is, I believe, the current Livonia Observer Outstanding Youth, and also Wendy's High School Heisman State Finalist. On top of all of that, she's also the Student Council All-School President, class president for three years, president of the mentoring program called Success Strategies. She's a four-year varsity tennis player and current captain, and she is on the Varsity Quiz Bowl Team, the National Honor Society, and the Spanish National Honor Society. She plans to attend the University of Pennsylvania's Wharton School of Business to major in Finance and Management, and she's the daughter of Ahung and Tony Zo, and she has a brother named Jonathan, who is a sophomore, and also a sophomore in the, or is a sophomore also in the MSC program. Okay, I think I covered it all. Congratulations. Next up, we have James Janz. Janz, Janz. Janz, okay. Next, let's see. James is a senior in the MSC program at Churchill High School. In addition to being a National Merit Scholarship finalist, James scored a perfect 36 on the ACT. Is a MSU Alumni Distinguished Scholar, AP Scholar with Distinction, and a Presidential Scholar nominee. When he isn't studying math, science, and computers, James can be found applying those skills as a member of the Livonia Warriors' First Robotics Team. He also helps in the after-school program, math and reading programs at Granville Elementary in the Clarenceville School District. James plans to attend Michigan State University and double major in, you guessed it, mathematics and computer science. He's the son of Christine and Jason Reins, and the late Jim Janz. He has three siblings, Casey, Brandon, and Catherine. Congratulations, James. And finally, we have Zach Absnack. Zach is a senior in the MSC program at Churchill High School. I'm seeing a trend here. Zach has an extensive list of accomplishments, particularly in mathematics. He has finished in the top 100 for math students in the Michigan Math Prize Competition for the last five years, including a third-place finish this year, along with a seventh and eleventh for the last two years. He's finished in first place twice, and second place twice, in the Michigan Math League. Zach is qualified for the USA Math Olympiad, representing Churchill for the last four years. Only about 250 students from all of North America qualify for this. This contest is a nine-hour test, having only six questions, math questions. He's been dual-enrolled, dual-enrolled in college classes for the last two years. This allowed him to participate in the SML Math Competition for two-year college students. He finished first in the Midwest and third in the country in 2015, and is first in the country so far this year. There are several more national and international math contests in which he has ranked very high. He was nominated for the Presidential Scholar Award, which will be announced sometime in May. Oh, and also, just one small detail, Zach has also earned a perfect score, 36 on the ACT. Zach was accepted into the Honors College at the University of Michigan and at Michigan State, but he, from what I hear, probably won't have to make that tough decision because he's been accepted and most likely will attend MIT to study math, music, and computer science. He's been in the Churchill Marching Band, and has participated on the Churchill Quiz Bowl Team for all four years of high school, and he is one of the lead programmers and game strategists for the Livonia Warriors' First Robotics Team. He is also an Eagle Scout and plays in the Livonia Youth Philharmonic Orchestra, the Michigan Philharmonic Youth Orchestra, and the Spectrum Orchestra. He's the son of Glennon Cathy, and grandson of Evelyn Absnack and Lorraine Germaine. And let's give a shout-out to his cat, Sabrina. Is that right? All right, congratulations, Zach. And one final applause for all five of our National Merit Scholars.
There is absolutely nothing I can say to follow up with what Mrs. Jenkins just covered for us. We are so very proud of all of our students, but when we have students that excel to this level academically, you folks are at the top. We congratulate you and to your families and to your teachers who helped you get to this place. The next recognition on our agenda this evening is Item 3C, Recognition of Gymnastics State Champions. I'm going to make the motion on this. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions recognizing Stevenson High School Senior Brianna Road for achieving a 2016 Michigan High School Athletic Association Division II State Champion Title in the All-Around Gymnastics Category, and Stevenson High School Junior Jessica Week for achieving a 2016 Michigan High School Athletic Association Division II State Champion Title in the Uneven Bars Event.
Support.
We have a motion by myself, Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers, and Mrs. Jenkins, can you give us more information?
Sure, my pleasure, thank you. Tonight is part two in a series of LPS State Champion Recognitions. Last month, we celebrated the achievements of Franklin High School State Champion Wrestler Nathan Atanza. Tonight, in two separate agenda items, we're recognizing the incredible talents of three students who have excelled to the top of their sports in gymnastics and swimming. We'll begin with gymnastics on this agenda item. First, I'd like to introduce you to Brianna Road. I could have Brianna join me at the podium. Hi, Brianna. Brianna is a senior at Stevenson High School and a gymnast on the Livonia Blue Gymnastics Team. Tapping off her final season in true form, Brianna served as senior captain and captured numerous titles on her journey to becoming a state champion gymnast. We have listed those accomplishments in a special resolution, which will be read by Board President Colleen Burton. Mrs. Burton, do you mind joining us at the podium? And while she's making her way to the podium, I'd like to introduce Jessica Week. Where are you, Jessica? Come on up. Jessica has served as junior captain on the Livonia Blue Gymnastics Team. Her accomplishments during this season are also quite remarkable and are detailed in the resolution. At this time, I'd love to ask President Burton to read each resolution. And I'll step aside.
I would be happy to.
And the resolutions read, I will read both of them, as they're a little bit different.
Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools School District Board of Education are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of students who distinguish themselves during the pursuit of their public education in the school district. And whereas Brianna Road, a senior at Stevenson High School, has distinguished herself by achieving the 2016 Michigan High School Athletic Association Division II All-Around Gymnastics State Champion Title. And whereas, in achieving this honor, Brianna captured this title with a score of 36.525 points, which, if you know gymnastics, is unbelievably amazing. Score of 36.525 points in the state championship, and all state honors in uneven parallel bars, floor exercise, balance beam, and vault. And whereas, this adds to the outstanding accomplishments Brianna has achieved as a Stevenson High School gymnast and senior captain of the Livonia Blue Gymnastics Team, including conference and regional titles that included first-place regional titles on balance beam, floor, and all-around during the 2015-16 season. Now therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Brianna Road for her outstanding accomplishments in athletics, and wish her well in her future endeavors as she applies the discipline and perseverance needed to excel in sports, to all areas of her life. Congratulations. And my second resolution for Jess. Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools District Board of Education are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of students who distinguish themselves during the pursuit of their public education in the school district. And whereas Jessica Week, a junior at Stevenson High School, has distinguished herself by achieving the 2016 Michigan High School Athletic Association Division II Individual Gymnastics State Champion on the uneven bars. And whereas, Jessica achieved this honor while serving as junior captain of the Livonia Blue Gymnastics Team. And whereas, this adds to the outstanding accomplishments Jessica has achieved during the 2015-16 season, including first-place conference titles on the uneven bars and all-around events, first-place regional title on the uneven bars, and a season-high score of 36.625. Now therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Jessica Week for her outstanding accomplishments in athletics, and wish her well in her future endeavors as she applies the discipline and perseverance needed to excel in sports, to all areas of her life. Congratulations, Jess. I'd also like to call up Lisa Broomfield for a moment. I will try to get through this. Lisa has been one of my daughter's coaches for many years. Lisa is, has been named State Gymnastics Coach of the Year in the state of Michigan. For that, we applaud you. This is not, what I'm going to say is not new to Lisa, because I've told her this in the past, and Livonia is blessed to have so many coaches who care not only about excelling in athletics, but also what goes on inside each student athlete that they have. Not only in their top gymnasts, or their top athletes in their given sport, but also to those who may be struggling a bit, or, as Lisa has had, completely new to the sport as they walk in the door as a high school athlete. In a district the size of Livonia, that can be pretty surprising, and yet Lisa has embraced each and every one of these gymnasts as if they are her top athlete. Lisa is one example of many coaches in Livonia that I've seen that embody this kind of characteristic, and shape not only gymnasts, but young ladies and young gentlemen to go forth into our community. You are excellent. We have a motion now on this item by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
President Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 3D, Recognition of State Swimming Champ. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, President Burton. Continuing with our state champion recognitions tonight... Continuing with our state champion recognitions tonight, I'm happy to introduce you to Stevenson High School Senior Swimmer Jackson O'Dowd. Jackson could join me at the podium. Jackson earned a state championship title in the 50-yard freestyle with a time of just 20.70 seconds. You will hear more about his accomplishments in the resolution, which will be read by Board Secretary Tammy Bonnefield. Could you, do you mind joining us at the podium?
And Mrs. Bonnefield, could you present the motion first?
Yes. Okay. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution recognizing Stevenson High School Senior Jackson O'Dowd for his 2016 Michigan High School Athletic Association Division I State Championship title in the 50-yard freestyle.
Support. We have the motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Right ahead.
She's making her way to the podium. Jackson is officially the fastest freestyle swimmer ever to attend Livonia Public Schools.
Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools School District Board of Education are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of students who distinguish themselves during the pursuit of their public education in the school district. And whereas Jackson O'Dowd, a senior at Stevenson High School, has distinguished himself by achieving the 2016 Michigan High School Athletic Association Division I State Championship title in the 50-yard freestyle swim. Whereas Jackson has achieved this honor with a Stevenson High School record-setting time of 20.7 seconds. And whereas this adds to the outstanding accomplishments Jackson has achieved, including 14-time KLAa Conference Champion, 13-time All-State Swimmer, nine-time All-American Swimmer, and Stevenson Record Holder in the 50, 100, and relay freestyle. Now therefore be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Jackson O'Dowd for his outstanding accomplishments in athletics and wish him well in his future endeavors as he applies the discipline and perseverance needed to excel in sports and in all areas of his life. Congratulations.
Okay, and let's see here. I wanted to say a couple more words about Jackson. What am I? Following graduation, he plans to swim for the University of Pennsylvania, where he was accepted into the prestigious Wharton School of Business. Jackson is an honor student who carries a 4.1 grade point average. I'd also like to ask Jackson's coach, Jeff Shoemaker, to join us at the podium. And we should note also, we have another, just immediately former Coach of the Year in swimming. Was it last year?
Two years.
Two years ago.
I don't know what else to say. As soon as he entered into the swim program as a freshman, he won the 50-yard freestyle KLAa meet, and then from then on out, he was an All-American. Quick story, two years ago, when we were state runner-ups, Division I state runner-ups, as we like to call it, the public school state champions. We had to shuffle around some relays, and Jackson was our fastest swimmer by far. He took, in order to manipulate the relays to score the most points, we decided not to put Jackson on the end of our medley relay, which was our fastest relay, and put him on the last two relays. By far, he would have that, he would be one of those members of the four medley relay members to have that school record. Not once has he said anything about that particular item. It's just that he knew it was for the team, and it was our best scenario that we could do. And by far, he's going to be obviously irreplaceable, and it's going to be tough to see him leave. We've had a lot of good times on the pool deck, and he will surely be missed.
All righty, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Center, I'm sorry, Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3E, our Golden Apple Award. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present a Golden Apple Award to a very special elementary school secretary who, through the years, has truly been the welcoming face of Grant Elementary School. As you know, the Golden Apple Awards are given to those who go above and beyond to benefit our schools, our district, and our community, and doing so with heartfelt passion and true care. At this time, I'd love to introduce you to Mrs. Sandy Christopherson, as our latest in the LPS orchard of Golden Apple Honories. And if I could have Mrs. Christopherson join me at the podium, please? It's not evident on the television screens, but she has about, oh, I don't know, 100 supporters out in the audience tonight. Narrowing down everything Mrs. Christopherson has done for our schools into a few moments is a difficult task. For me personally, I can say that she calmed my nervous mom fears. Years ago, when my first child, who is now a high school junior, attended Grant, I appreciated her calm and caring demeanor on the phone when one of my kids was sick or needed to be picked up, or just when they needed some telephone encouragement from mom during the school day. I know my experiences with Mrs. Christopherson are among the many shared by hundreds of parents in the Grant community. We received, my office received 22 separate nominations for her to receive this award tonight. Those nominations came from parents, staff members, and her building principal, Mrs. Cuzino, who's also joined us in the audience, among the staff, and daughter Lucy? Hi Lucy. I'll try to extract some of the glowing comments from the nomination sheets here. From teacher Doug Risco, he says, Sandy is Grant Elementary's ambassador. She not only assists the principal, she helps the entire school community, the teachers, parents, grandparents, and especially the students. Sandy wears the most hats out of everyone on our staff. She is a friend, mom, wife, grandmother, administrative assistant, a nurse, a teacher, an entertainer, a guidance counselor, and therapist, all wrapped up into one outstanding person. Some words that were used to describe Mrs. Christopherson include hands-on, problem solver, dedicated, hard-working, well-respected, knowledgeable, positive, caring, and always willing to go the extra mile for students and staff. Teacher Doreen Byrne said this of Sandy. I cannot think of a person more deserving of this award. Sandy is a dedicated and loyal LPS employee. She is beloved by her teachers, parents, and children. We are so blessed to have such a wonderful and loving person representing our school and district. Mrs. Christopherson goes above and beyond by serving on the school's social committee and planning parties for the staff. Do they call you Julie, the cruise director by chance? She's creative, and she's been known on several occasions to wear silly costumes to school to celebrate special days of the year, including the 100th Day of School, Halloween, of course, or March is Reading Month. Teacher Lori Stanford said this of Sandy. Her smile is contagious, her laughter warms your heart, she makes everyone feel special. I could go on and on, but without further ado, I'd love to ask Board Trustee Eileen McDonald to join us at the podium to present Mrs. Christopherson with her Golden Apple Award. Along with the award, we also give out this cute little Golden Apple pin. I'll tape it on the back there for you. Congratulations. Just to congratulate Sandy for all her hard work and what she does for our students and the staff, I'd like to make, address some comments from some of her colleagues. Sandy has a positive attitude and consistently completes all aspects of her job. She supports the school's PTA activity and is a team player. Sandy is helpful to everyone, from the smallest student to the most tenured staff member and every parent in between. Parents, we can be needy sometimes. And Sandy's attitude is infectious. Some quotes, Sandy is going to retire next school year. She has put her heart and soul into Grant and will be sorely missed. This award is a wonderful addition to the long list of accomplishments during her meaningful career within Livonia Public Schools. Caroline Schreiner, Grant parent. And secondly, just mention her name, and you'll have people commenting on how much we all love her. We feel very spoiled to have her at our school. Nicole Keeler, other Grant parent. Congratulations.
Superintendent Oakwest and President Burton and School Board, thank you very much for accepting this nomination and giving it to me. This award means a lot to me. To know that I have a staff and parents that think I am worthy of it just warms my heart. I can't even express in words how happy I am to work with these wonderful, wonderful people, and I see them scattered all the way across. Thank you for coming. Really, really thank you. And I have so many friends on the school board and at this school board office and just throughout the community. I've been doing this for almost 29 years, and I can't think of a better job, a better place to be, or better people to work with. And from the bottom of my heart, I award you guys. Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier this evening, we are going to take a break at this time. Oh, I'm sorry, we've got a motion? No, we don't. No, we're all set. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to take a break at this time. We'll take about a five to 10-minute recess so that those in the audience this evening can congratulate our honorees. We will be back in about five to 10 minutes. We are now at recess. Thank you. Welcome to the continuation of the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of April 18, 2016. The next item on our agenda is Item 3F, written communications. Does any board member have written communications they would like to share with the board? All righty. Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is 3G, audience communications. I've been taking this time before our audience communications to let folks know who might be tuning in for the first time to a board meeting, that what the role of the board is and what the role of the administration is, and therefore who audience communication members may expect a response back from. The role of the board is threefold. The first role is to hire and evaluate the superintendent, which we were blessed to be able to hire Mrs. Oakwest to lead our district just a few months ago, and we are so blessed and so relieved to have that accomplished and to see the wonderful things that are continuing to happen in Livonia Public Schools under your tenure now. The next role of the Board of Education is to set policy for the district. And the last role of the Board of Education is to set the strategic plans or the long-term goals for the district and match the budget up with those goals. Those are exclusively the roles of the Board of Education. Everything else, all day-to-day operations of the district are under the responsibility of Mrs. Oakwest, and in response, the Board of Education evaluates Mrs. Oakwest on the handling of all those duties, and there are many. Therefore, if your issue pertains to some of the items that are the responsibility of the Board of Education, you can expect a response back if you've requested one from the board. If your area of concern pertains more to a day-to-day operations issue, you may expect a response back from Mrs. Oakwest as she handles those areas. We also have a three-minute time limit on our audience communication portion of our meeting, three minutes per person, and we ask that all people who are addressing the board honor that, and that is so that everybody has a fair and equal opportunity to address the board. What we will do, Mr. Johnson has been, will be timing for us for audience communications. If you hear a beep going on, you'll know that you've hit your three minutes, and that's just a little bit more polite way rather than someone interrupting you. So if you do hear a beep going on, if you could wrap it up, that would be appreciated. The first member of our audience who would like to address the board this evening is Mary Morrison. Mary?
My name is Mary Morrison. I'm the teacher librarian at Holmes Middle School. I've been teaching for 14 years, and I'm on step two. I've worked in three different districts, and my wages have always been frozen. 11 years ago, I moved to Garden City Schools from Dearborn Heights, District 7, because I wanted to work at the secondary level, but they froze my wages walking in the door. When I heard there was a position open in LPS, I was thrilled, thinking I was going to be moving into a lighthouse district. LPS immediately froze my wages, and four years later, my wages remained frozen. This is my second career. I chose to be a public servant. I knew when I left the business world that I would no longer get big bonuses and corporate perks, but I certainly did not expect my wages to be frozen at entry level for my entire career. I have a daughter who is dyslexic and cannot read or write. I could see how challenging it was to be illiterate in a world based on literacy, and I thought I could help other people learn to read, so I became a teacher librarian. And then one day when I was teaching, I realized that technology was the great equalizer. It didn't matter if you couldn't read, because the computer could read to you. If you struggled with writing, you could use technology to demonstrate what you had learned in another way, with a movie, or a podcast, or a comic. My passion became encouraging teachers to integrate technology into their curriculum so that students who struggle would have another way to show what they have learned. To this end, I have written and received thousands of dollars worth of grants to bring technology into the schools where I worked. In addition to that, I have conducted fundraising programs that have netted over $10,000 for LPS alone to purchase books for the school libraries. Having said all of that, I work for the same reason that all of you work, to support my family. I go to work every day to take care of the children that sit at our table at dinner each night. I have given this job my all, expecting only what was fair and my due, and I have not received that. Now, I'm 56 years old, and I'm looking at retirement. While living within my means, I still have not been able to repay my college debt, and will never recoup the financial losses that I have taken. I wonder if my children will have to help me financially when I get older, because I'm a teacher. Do you really think anyone will go to college for four years to become a teacher when they truly begin to realize that they will be unable to support their families or pay back their college debt? Schools need to invest in teachers. Our commodity is our talent, our education, and our experience, and we need to be fairly compensated now and not 10 years from now. No one should have to say. I've been teaching for 14 years, and I'm on step two. Thank you.
Our next speaker for audience communication is Gillian Black. Gillian?
My name is Gillian Black, and I'm a 5'6" center teacher at Johnson Upper Elementary. This is my second year in this role, and I love working for Livonia Public Schools. I am speaking on behalf of the investment in teachers and through my experiences over the last two years working in the district. I am very fortunate to have found a position teaching special education immediately upon graduating from college. I began my role taking a position as a long-term substitute for Kristen Garrick while she was on maternity leave. Teaching special education kindergarten opened my eyes to the world of special education, and I fell in love with the idea of having a center-based classroom. After finishing up my long-term substitute position, I was called for a second long-term substitute job as a 5'6" center teacher at Cooper Upper Elementary. I immediately fell in love with the students and the staff I was working with and knew I wanted to stay. After applying and interviewing for the position, I was thrilled that I was hired. Starting your own classroom halfway through the year is not easy and can be a bit overwhelming. But I was thankful that the teacher before me had left me all of her classroom materials and supplies. It included books, games, some craft supplies, and desk stock full of the essentials. These resources play an integral part in a special education classroom and create a more positive learning environment, both socially and academically. Even so, I wanted to make the classroom feel like my own. After a couple trips to IKEA, Target, and Michael's, I stocked up on lesson materials, craft supplies, Fun Friday activities, sensory items, and a few extra things to make my room a more comfortable and enjoyable classroom environment. In the world of teaching special education, you create all of your own supplemental activities and gather resources to teach more hands-on learning. While we follow the general education curriculum, we create activities that bring learning to life in a way that our students understand. Every student has a different way of learning, and we're supposed to teach to their individual needs. We hear differentiation a million times throughout the day, but how are we supposed to do that without the proper funding available? Even with everything that the teacher before me had left, I still spent over a third of my salary from the time I was permanently hired. It's all in the little things that add up. Finishing up my second year of teaching, I'd like to buy my own place and become more independent. At this time, I don't have the proper funding to do so. My family always jokes I spend more money on my students than I do on myself. They'll ask what I want for my birthday or Christmas, and the answer will always be, number one, money, and two, classroom supplies. As teachers, we don't go into the field of teaching for the pay. You go into it for the kids. Students need to have the resources available in order to learn, even basic things such as books and pencils. Everyone says it's all for the kids, but is it really? We don't even have a certain allotment to purchase classroom supplies. The $100 that I received at the beginning of the school year was from the funds that the PTA at our school raised. What about the first and second-year teachers who are just getting started? What about the veteran teachers who are modifying the way that they teach? And what about the students? Doctors aren't asked to purchase their own medicine. Engineers aren't asked to purchase their own tools. So why are educators required to purchase their own materials through their job and teach the future leaders, doctors, and engineers of the world? If we are required, then shouldn't our salary reflect that? Would anyone really work overtime if their salary didn't correspond? As special education teachers, we have an insane amount of paperwork to do in order to document goals, grades, and progress notes. I don't know any teacher who walks in at 8:00 and leaves right when the bell rings at 3:40 with all their work completed for the next day. What others don't understand is that there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people don't see.
Gillian, if you could wrap it up, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
We're not told to spend the extra bit of money to put into our classroom, just like we're not told to stay until 5:00 or later. We can't do our job without doing so. I'm happy to do it. I teach because I love the kids, not for the pay. It would be nice to have a little extra appreciation. Invest in the teachers in Livonia Public Schools in the same way that we invest in our students.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to approach the board this evening? The next item on our agenda is Item 3H, Response to Prior Audience Communications. We have had a number of our staff approaching the board in recent months, and a number of themes resonate, and I want the staff and the public to know that these are heard. And further, one word that just jumped out at me this evening was "fair." And what the state of Michigan has done to public education is not fair. In 1993-94, Proposal A was passed, and with that, funding for public schools changed. Rather than supporting our own individual communities, our tax dollars go to Lansing, and the promise back was that Lansing would make sure that public education is funded fairly. That worked until our economy turned south, and it is no longer funded fairly. It's no longer even funded adequately. I would like the folks in the public to know when they hear things like there's a $10 per student increase, or there's perhaps a $20 or maybe even a $50 increase, this has not even come close to covering the $470 cut that public education across the state of Michigan took just a few years ago. So when folks out there are hearing about increases in education, please understand public education is still trying to crawl out of the hole that has been Michigan. And not only in education, but most certainly in education. I encourage our community members to join this Board of Education in continually approaching Lansing on every front, your individual legislators, our governor, any other legislators who are not even in our community, to bring home the thought and the concept that public education is not funded fairly. And nobody but our students should be first in terms of properly funding the many obligations of the state of Michigan. Public education needs to be funded fairly and adequately, and I encourage you to join with me in making sure that message is continuously heard until it's satisfied. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 4, our Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the following Consent Agenda items as recommended by the Superintendent. Item 4A, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of March 21st, 2016. 4B, Minutes of the Closed Session of March 21st, 2016. 4C, Minutes of the Special Meeting of April 11th, 2016. 4D, Minutes of the Closed Session of April 11th, 2016.
Support. I'm sorry. Almost.
Almost. 5A, Approval of Cooperative Education Program Agreements, Livonia Career Technical Center. 5B, Approval of Cooperative Education Program Agreements, Livonia Transition Program. And 6A, Bills for Payment, April 19th, 2016.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions or comments from board members on this Consent Agenda this evening? No? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Sunters?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening, I'm sorry, yes, can everyone pass in their minutes of the closed session? The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 5C, our PEP Grant Presentation. Mrs. Scott, would you like to introduce our PEP Grant this evening?
Yes. Good evening, President Burton, members of the board, and Superintendent Oakwest. It is my privilege to introduce Cheryl Archibald this evening. She has been the Health and Physical Education Coordinator since 2008. Cheryl began collaborating with colleagues in 2007 about writing an application for a physical education program grant, better known as the PEP Grant. And from there, the rest is history. I do not want to take away from the presentation tonight, so I will let Mrs. Archibald tell the story of the PEP Grant and the impact it has had on our programming, our staff, and our students.
Good evening. We began our journey in 2009 when we applied for a federal grant called the Carol M. White PEP Grant. Never in a million years did I think we would ever receive one, but we did. We were awarded over $695,000 for our elementary K6 buildings. We were able to purchase new, updated curriculum, equipment for every student in every building, and quality professional development over three years. Fast forward to 2013 to our second PEP Grant.
Creating a Culture of Healthy Habits is a federal PEP Grant totaling over $1.3 million. Creating a Culture of Healthy Habits is a strategic three-year plan for Livonia Public Schools with the goal of increasing the health of our youth in accordance to the state of Michigan's standards and benchmarks. We will achieve this by initiating, expanding, and improving physical education, nutrition education, and comprehensive school physical activity programs throughout the district. This mission centers on two linked and interconnected goals: improve the health of middle and high school students in the Livonia Public School District through attainment of Michigan physical education standards and benchmarks, and to improve the quality of secondary physical education, nutrition education, and physical activity according to the Michigan Physical Education Standards and Benchmarks. Our fitness centers did a complete overhaul. We now have the latest Matrix strength training equipment, ellipticals, bicycles, rowing machines, and helix. We also were able to purchase any of our teachers' desires, such as yoga mats, kettlebells, stability and medicine balls, and power bars.
The PEP Grant has been a wonderful thing for Livonia Public Schools. The benefits over here at Churchill are we're starting to see more and more kids get into physical education, try new things. Our summer program, we have kids trying things like kick golf and things they would never experience in the past, and they really, really enjoy it. Personally, as an educator, I think that this grant has brought so many opportunities, especially with the way things are with budgets, and it's just been fantastic. It's a lot of work, but the benefits have been outstanding for Livonia Public Schools. And I can't wait to continue it and see what the future holds for the staff and the kids.
Through ongoing intensive professional development, we have adopted the following curricula: Michigan Model for Health, SPAR, and Five for Life. Teachers, on average, report incorporating the new curriculum 94% of the time. Technology has also reached the classrooms. Teachers now have iPads to enhance their programs. Heart rate monitors are now being utilized in many physical education classes on an ongoing basis. Professional development was extensive and inclusive.
This is two of the trainers from the company called Focus Fitness.
Here we are, participating with Focus Fitness, learning many new and exciting fitness activities to share with our students. Coordinated school physical activity programming incorporated before and after-school activity sessions at all of our schools. We also held summer fitness programs. In fact, our CrossFit program became so successful, we were featured on a local TV news segment.
I'm Sydney Robes, a senior at Stevenson High School, where a special program encourages students to embrace physical fitness as a way of life. This CrossFit program is made possible by a $1.3 million physical education grant.
The main goal of these students was so that they can gain some confidence, so that they can be empowered to do this stuff on their own in the future.
It gives me something I can dedicate myself to for the remaining of the school year, even for the rest of my life.
Well, I feel like I'm a more healthy person now with the choices that Coach Brenner's taught us for eating habits.
It's really made me realize that strong is the new skinny.
Hi, we're so glad CrossFit came to Stevenson because we made so many new friends and we've gotten so fit, and it's just great. It gives us the point in our week where we get excited to go work out, and we love it. Thank you so much.
Mercy Elite, along with Madonna Nurses and St. Mary Mercy Hospital, worked in our classrooms, honing in on the nutritional aspects of a healthy body.
Hi, I'm here to talk about the summer PEP activities and what we offer here at Stevenson High School. Many kids have been coming this summer. We've had a great turnout. We offer the fitness center, and our fitness center is new in the last two years, and they get trained in how to use everything up there. We also offer the weight room to be open, so kids again get introduced to that when we have the weightlifting classes here at Stevenson. We have open gym that runs during the summer for two hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and kids can do a variety of activities because we have these wonderful facilities you see behind me.
We like coming to the open gym because it's fun, and you don't just sit around. You get to do basketball, soccer, volleyball, just a lot of fun activities.
We offer CrossFit here every Tuesday and Thursday in the summer, and Brent is our amazing certified CrossFit guy.
No looking at your neighbors. You guys don't even have to look at me. I know that's a relief for most of you.
CrossFit with the kids, it brings them a sense of confidence. It brings them a little bit of a social aspect. It also teaches them how to do day-to-day things, like picking something up off the ground with proper form so that they can not hurt themselves in their own lives.
Okay, and always keep the chest up. I don't want to see the backs caving over. I want to keep them up. Okay, good posture. Okay? That's how we squat with the bar.
It also sets them up for an active future and then shows them the benefits of being active. Little things like being able to go up and down steps and running to and from a car are not going to win them as much, and then they're going to be able to be much happier in their lives.
So I want you to bring it in a little bit, okay? Yeah, yeah, a little better, then we can stick our butt out and squat lower. Yeah!
I've not heard enough good things about what he has to offer, and we also offer CrossFit during the school year.
We enjoy coming to CrossFit because it builds our strength and endurance, and it's fun.
I teach the yoga class here during the school year. It's called Whole Self-Fitness. Kids have built their flexibility, their strength, their self-esteem. Stress levels of kids have gone down tremendously. The important thing is that you don't fight the pose and that you keep breathing. And then what I'm going to have you do is when you're ready, you're going to come up and hold your bow pose, and you can keep your legs bent. Good. As wide as your mat, but keep your toes together. Now, sink down. There you go. Good job.
I enjoy yoga because it's really fun and it's good for me.
You like going to CrossFit and yoga because?
It's just something to do, and you're not laying around doing absolutely nothing for the entire summer. You get to be physically active.
The kids really build up a confidence when they come here, I think, and because that newness, that unsureness of coming in at the beginning of the school year definitely goes away. Kids have met new friends, and it's just been a positive thing. It's getting them out of the house. It's getting them active for anywhere from one to four hours on a Tuesday and Thursday. We also do a raffle at the end of the summer, and for as many times as you come in, your name gets put in for a drawing, and you can win some really great things. Kids have gotten free t-shirts from doing this. It's just been overall a really good turnout, and it's just been really positive, and hopefully it'll continue again next year. Thanks.
It's inspired me to get stronger and lead a healthier lifestyle. I made a bunch of friends here, and I look forward to doing it every week.
Hi, I'm Guro. I'm an exchange student from Norway. In the beginning of my exchange year, I was trying to find a place to fit in. CrossFit Club is so amazing, and I love it. It's a great workout, and I found a lot of friends. It's been the best thing of my year.
I'm so thankful for the PEP Grant. It's been a life-changing experience, to say the least. It's given me more out of my body than I could have ever imagined or ever wanted. It pushes you far beyond than what you thought you were capable of.
Livonia Public Schools, you made it!
I would like the teachers to stand that are here. These teachers had to put in massive amounts of data to be given, to be analyzed. I didn't have one complaint the entire time. They donated and gave so much to before and after-school, and they really took the professional development and honed in on it and made it theirs. So I can't thank you enough for working as a team and creating and making this PEP Grant very worthwhile. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Oakwest?
No, go ahead first.
Go ahead, jump in. They've been my way, I'm sure. Well, I just wanted to acknowledge Mrs. Archibald. It is not unlike her to be the first to acknowledge others, but really, when you think of... It is not unlike her to be the first to acknowledge others, but really, when you think about the idea of a school district getting one PEP grant, let alone two. So for the past six years, our students, our staff, and our community have benefited from, directly from her efforts. She spearheaded the initial, the initial grant writing along with Charlotte Werthen, and that was a huge undertaking and a significant amount of money to coordinate, not just having the professional development to coordinate for staff, but all of the data collection, all of the ordering. I want to also give a quick shout-out to Mrs. Herbeck, who has been your partner through all of this and has helped over the past six years as well. But Cheryl really has a unique ability to connect with kids, to connect with staff, and also with many folks that like to look things over with a fine-tooth comb in Washington. And so, her job entails many, many monitors on many levels, and her efforts truly have been tireless. She is such an amazing advocate for physical fitness and for lifelong sustainability of those skills in students and in our staff. We have been tremendously grateful for her efforts, and we really do have some wonderful things in our schools that will be sustained for many years to come. Our teaching staff have embraced this, and it's been a lot of work. Sometimes people think with a grant comes a bit of a free ride, and it's anything but that. Our teachers have modified their practices, both at the elementary level and the secondary level, and I don't, I hope you had a chance to enjoy that look at the summer programs because it was offered two years ago to start, right? And then this year, the numbers grew exponentially. And one of the goals was for our teachers to bring in students who were not your traditional athlete, who may not be the first folks to walk into the gym during the summer or to one of our athletic facilities. And the number of students that they were able to reach was really remarkable. And so, again, I just wanted to acknowledge Mrs. Archibald's efforts, her talents, and her commitment to this over the past many years as our physical education teacher leader and as a teacher in the district, but certainly spearheading and being the district coordinator for two PEP grants totaling over $2 million. So, thank you.
Giving me a standing ovation.
Are there questions or comments from any other board members? Mr. Centers?
I just want to say thank you for everyone, yourself included, that made all this possible. If you look at the equipment, the programming, that's stuff you expect to see at Detroit Country Day or the swinkiest private schools, but these are phenomenal programs, and I'm sure they're going to make a lifelong impact on our students. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
May I just give a quick shout-out to Ms. Rosman, whose voice, I think, was, was the one coordinating us through that video? And you may, I don't know if you had some students helping with that in advanced radio and TV, but thank you so much for putting that together, and we'll be proud to add that to our website.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? No? Thank you again so much. There's so many students that have benefited from this. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 5D: Recommend Expulsion of One Secondary Student. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District expel one Frost Middle School student, grade eight, for serious violations of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education policies.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6B: Approval of Bid Results for Move Management Services. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Yes, Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase Three Move Management Services bid for the amount of $236,395 and a contingency budget amount of $47,279 for a total amount of $283,674, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to negotiate and execute final contract on behalf of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education with the recommended contractor.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura, among others. Sounds like a kind of a chorus there. Ms. Addy, would you like to address this item for the board?
Yes, thank you very much. We are bringing several items this evening related to the 2013 bond issue as it relates to our summer program coming up. This is one of them. Mr. Scott Smith from Plant Moran Cressa is here this evening as well, so if we have any questions that we need his assistance with, we'll ask him to come on up to the podium. We did have an opportunity on all of these items to talk about them first at a study session, and then secondly, at our committee of the whole meeting, so we have provided a great deal of detail, and of course, we have Plant Moran at those, at the committee meeting as well to go over all of these items in detail. So, as you always say, President Burton, we sometimes talk about these quickly at this part of the meeting, but we have had an extensive review of all of these topics. So, with that, our first item on the agenda for Move Management Services is the company that we're recommending. They are the lowest bidder, and they'll provide moving services for this summer, for all of our projects for the summer. So our three elementaries, our upper elementary, our middle school, and then of course, we have, we're going on at Franklin for the second year of that, and then beginning on Stevenson. So, it's a big project this summer, and this is the classroom office moving. This is separate from the technology, which will be our next agenda item. So again, we did have an opportunity to talk about this, and we are recommending the low bidder, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
Well, I just, the first year that we implemented the bond, I know there was a lot of confusion with moving and starting the school year and being ready, and I know a lot of our staff were concerned about being ready to teach right at the beginning of the year. And last year, with these moving services and specifically, technology services to move, it sounds like there was a huge improvement from what I've heard.
Significant improvement. Yes, I would agree, and separating those two things out so that you have one group just handling getting furniture back in, getting boxes back in versus the technology people. They're both experienced. You'll see both of these firms are experienced in both, but they just, when they can concentrate just on one, and that's the maps they're working with, and they're getting the copiers in the offices and computers in the, in the classrooms, it's a much more efficient process.
Great. Yeah, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 6C: Approval of Bid Results for Technology Move Management Services, which is related. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase Three Technology Move Management Services bid for the amount of $59,910 and a contingency budget amount of $11,982 for the total amount of $71,892, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to negotiate and execute final contract on behalf of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education with the contractor.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers. Ms. Abby?
Yes. Thank you. Some of this already, but I'd like to continue. We certainly did. So again, this is the separate bid for the technology move for this summer for Phase Three projects. We are recommending the low vendor to meet our requirements, premier location, and both of these vendors have worked in the district before, and we've been satisfied with their work, so we would recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 6D: Approval of Grant Painting Award and Bid Results for Randolph Lockers. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the grant elementary school painting award for an amount of $96,759 and a contingency cost of $1,700, and approve the bid for Randolph Elementary School lockers for an amount of $23,400 and a contingency cost of $1,800 for a total revised elementary school Phase Three project cost of $9,958,917, and authorize Assistant Superintendent for Business Services to negotiate and execute final contracts with the contractors on behalf of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this for us?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, another 2013 bond issue project. As you know, we brought the bulk of the recommendations for our three elementary schools that we're upgrading this summer, and that has been approved by the Board of Education, but we had these two final items to finalize. We had to relook at our painting bid at Grant Elementary School, and as you know, we were working on our lockers and how they would work at Randolph, so we're very pleased to bring these two bids to you. Looking forward to getting the lockers in at Randolph that we, our architects helped us find a way to get those in those hallways over there, as we've talked about, that's buildings a little bit different, so we're looking forward to providing those at Randolph. And this should be the last of the trades that we bring on these three elementaries, and we're ready to go. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That's good. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. Ms. Abby, can you refresh the board what the warranty is on the painting portion of the projects for the bond for this summer?
If I speak incorrectly, Scott's going to correct me, but I believe it's two years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Two-year.
All righty, and just for our schools' employees, what is the process for them to, if they do have an issue, what do, what do they have to do in order to get things corrected if it needs to be?
Yeah, typically, we ask people to start with their building administrator. If we're onsite during construction, it's a little bit different. We provide them with instruction on how to work with the people that are in the building at that time, but if you're talking about something, a building that's already been completed, if they work with their building administrator, they'll know to, how to get that up here to our offices.
Okay, great, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6E: Approval of Bid Results for Stevenson High School Phase Three Balance of Awards. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Stevenson High School painting, signage, testing, and balancing, and additional construction manager fees for an amount of $312,600, and a total revised Stevenson High School Phase Three project cost of $18,764,854, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of Board of Education with the recommended contractors.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this for us?
Yes, thank you. As you know, we will be starting construction on Stevenson High School this summer, so that will, like Franklin, will be a two-year project. We did bring the bulk of the vendors and bids to the Board of Education, and were approved previously, and we appreciate that because we have started to order some of those long lead items and started to get some work going on that school so we can get that done timely. We are bringing these three trades to you this evening: painting, signage, and testing and balancing. We did have an opportunity to look through the budgets and the recommendation from our construction manager, AUC, and that's, along with the bid tabulations are in your project, in your package, excuse me, and we are recommending the lowest responsible bidder, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6F: Approval of Change Order for Holmes Middle School. May I have a motion, please? Bear with us for a moment, we've got a lot of people up here.
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education approve the change order for Holmes Middle School for Phase Three construction projects for a total cost of $229,660.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. Ms. Abby?
Thank you very much. We wanted to bring this item to the Board of Education. You'll recall that whenever we have a change order or accounting procedures that we established for the bond work requires that anything over $100,000 be brought to the Board of Education for formal approval. This one's a little unusual because we actually haven't started our work at Holmes Middle School yet. That's a summer project coming up, but when we approved the work for the, for Holmes for this summer, this particular item, which I'll describe in a second, was an alternate. We did not accept that alternate at that time. Subsequent to that, we heard from our staff at Holmes Middle School, our principal there, as well as our operations staff, that really wanted, cleared up for us and working with our architect and Plant Moran Cressa, that the equipment that we have, the mechanical equipment that we have in this particular area really is at end of life, is failing, and we are spending a considerable amount of resources, both in terms of our staff and financial, to continually upgrade and try and keep that equipment working, and frankly, it's just not. It's just, it's failing all the time. So, we revisited that particular alternate, and we are recommending that change. We had an opportunity to go through that in detail with the board at the committee meeting. You'll recall that that is the area around the media center that includes three computer labs. Again, very important to have the equipment working properly there, and also three classrooms around the side of the media center. So what we were recommending we do there is replace the mechanical equipment. That will also provide us, of course, the opportunity to replace the ceiling and the lights once we have that all torn up as well. So, that entire project, we are recommending that we move forward this summer. It will be more efficient to do it while we have the mechanical crews out there and lighting and electrical, et cetera. There's also a little bit of electrical work and case work in this recommendation as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All righty. Are there questions or comments from the board? We talked about this in the committee of the whole, but for the benefit of the public, when we say end of life, you mentioned, when asked, you said this is equipment that's original to the building.
Correct.
The building is built in the 1960s, late 1960s. This is approaching 50-year-old equipment.
Yeah, in our operations department, you know, originally, this was a financial issue not to do it. As you know, we're always doing that balance of whether to do something now while we're working on the project, will it be more efficient, or is it something we could do at a separate time? That was a decision that was made, and frankly, they just asked us to revisit it, and we did because of so much of the year, the mechanical equipment just isn't working. So it just has not been comfortable for our staff and for our students in that building.
Okay. And I assume that there is money in the bond that we can do this. We would not be going over budget with this item.
Correct.
Okay, all righty. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Oakley?
Just one quick note that, just for the benefit of our, of our community, considering that we spoke earlier about, about budgets, that the last five items are all coming from the 2013 bond issue fund and not out of our general operating expenses.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. Alright, seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 6G, Approval of Bid Results for Central Office West Building Repairs. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the lowest responsible bid for Central Office West Building repairs from Butcher and Butcher Construction, Rochester Hills, Michigan, for a total cost of $117,405.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, and Ms. Abby, would you like to address this for us?
Yes, thank you very much. Switching gears, this will be a sinking fund project, one of two that we'll be discussing this evening, and again, we've had many opportunities to discuss this. As you know, this is repairs to the west wing or the west side of this particular building, or the original older school that's the separate building. As you know, we've had some safety issues relative to the quality, or the deterioration, the lack of quality, on the windows in that building. We've determined that we need to, for safety reasons, we need to replace the windows and do some repair to that, as well as do some repair to the brickwork along the roof, and some of the work repair, roof repair, which will stop the water infiltration, which is the cause of the original work to those windows. That is a building that has not had continual maintenance, and it is, it is not surprising that, at this point, we do need to make some upgrades to that building. As you know, this has been an, as anyone knows who's driven by Central Office, we've had that building taped up and boarded, parts of it boarded up for some time, as we've spent a considerable amount of time deliberating our options out there, in finding the most economical solution to making it safe and secure for our staff that are in that building. So, we have, we put out a bid for, again, window replacement and upgrade, as well as the roofing work to be done. We believe these two items together will provide us, one, safety in the building, and two, to keep the building in good repair for the next 15, 20 years or so. Again, as I've said, this isn't a 50-year solution. We're not doing an extensive amount of tuck pointing or other work to, to that building, but it is a space that we use for our staff here, as well as our computer lab for professional development, and for other people to use our computer lab. So, we would recommend that we move forward. We did put out a bid package for the windows and for the roofing, and we are recommending the lowest responsible bidder. As you know, we had two vendors respond, and we are recommending the lowest responsible bidder, and would recommend that we move forward with that, so we can get that done timely.
Are there questions or comments from the board? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. Ms. Abby, do we foresee, in the next five to 10 years, additional major repairs to that complex?
Yeah, we had an opportunity to work with the operations department, and we really don't. The boiler is original, but we haven't had any issues with it. The other air handling and air conditioning units are rather new, and they've been working fine. So, we anticipate that this should get us through a period of time. We did look at, estimate the cost of a boiler if we had to replace it. That's probably 15,000 to 20,000. We don't anticipate it, but boilers go when they decide to go.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? For the benefit of the public, Ms. Abby was, was very professional and delicate in saying that the windows needed repair, and they did, because we had a situation last summer where a window literally fell out of the building. It's not an issue of we would like nicer, shinier windows, it's that we need them to all stay on the walls of the building and not fall out anymore. Thankfully, no one was hurt, but that brought that situation from some day we would like to, to this is now an emergency, which is what predicated tape and board on a window, but we simply must have our buildings be safe. Also, along the lines of what Mrs. Okus was saying earlier, just to make sure the public understands, this item does come from a sinking fund, which is dollars that our, our community has set aside specifically for major repairs or replacement of items in our buildings that needs, that need to be repaired or replaced, and it's not an option to use that money for general fund purposes. And further, we, we discussed, along the line of what Mr. Johnson was saying, the cost of doing this repair versus the cost of taking down that, that very old section of building, and it's actually going to cost us more to take it down than it is to do these repairs and make that building functional for at least the foreseeable future. So, it was the opinion of, of, at least myself, and we'll find out here in a moment if, if the rest of the board is, is in agreement that, that this is the better of the two options. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6H, Approval of Bid Results for Pavement Replacements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District award the bid for pavement replacement for Hayes and Kennedy Elementary and Riley Upper Elementary Schools to Best Asphalt Incorporated of Romulus, Michigan, for a cost of $454,500 and a contingency cost of $45,450, for a total cost of $499,950, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to sign and execute contracts with the approved vendor.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this for us?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, this would be a sinking fund project for this summer, and we are recommending the upgrades of some of the paving projects at those three schools. We had an opportunity, Mr. Smith did, to go through those in detail, where we'll be doing those projects at those three schools and what needs to be upgraded. As you know, we typically do paving projects these summer. That's been a part of our long-term facility upgrades, as we look each summer at what projects we need to do in order to keep up and keep our schools in good order across the district. These, of course, are three schools that have already been renovated, so they've already had the construction trucks out there. So, doing the paving now, after the schools have been renovated, makes sense. Obviously, not doing that before or during would not make sense. So, again, this is part of our normal, long-term facility planning and upgrades as we do each summer.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6I, Approval of Resolution for Storm Water Management. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached resolution for the school district's storm water management plan.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson, and Ms. Abby, you're up again.
Thank you. Changing gears a little bit this time, though. Livonia Public Schools is part of the Detroit metropolitan area where we, system where we discharge storm water, and as a result of that, we are required to obtain a permit from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, the MDEQ, and those permits are renewable every five years. So, MDEQ is responsible to manage what happens across the state of Michigan with storm water discharge. So, what comes off of our roofs, down our gutters, rain, et cetera, that, so we're not talking about what goes down our drains, but what comes out through the environment. So, that storm water management plan, I'm sure everyone has heard, has just been much more topical the last five to seven years, as it relates to how we discharge water. So, the Board of Education had an opportunity to have Arch Environmental here last week. They went over detail what the MDEQ's requirements are, what the Livonia Public Schools requirements are. Part of those requirements are to have a storm water management plan, SWMP, which the district has, and we continually, it's, it's an ongoing document. We continue to upgrade that, as Arch had discussed with you. But part of the permitting process is we have that plan, and also that the Board of Education reviews that, looks at that, and then this resolution actually says that the board supports what it is the district is doing in order to be compliant with Michigan Department of Environmental Quality requirements. This was easy for us to present to you, because we are doing those things, and we have been doing those things. So, a lot of those things are how we wash our vehicles in the district, how we store the salt, it's how, what things we can and can't put down the drains in the district, many of the things that we all know from our own, working in our own homes, and things that we'll do that we know from being good stewards of the environment. So, again, these are things that we're already doing, so what we're asking the board to do is to publicly acknowledge by adopting this resolution that the district has a plan and that we're following that plan.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. I just wanted to acknowledge, is it Arch?
Arch, yeah.
Because what we heard the other night, a week ago, when they made their presentation, the tedious, tediousness of the application process, and the amount of work that goes into that. So, this is sort of the, the end result of that, and our job is pretty easy. Their job has been pretty difficult trying to get that, that permit, even though it is a renewal. So, I just wanted to acknowledge their work and thank them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
While, while we're thanking people, I just wanted to thank Mr. Lau, too, who came and made his television debut, as far as I could tell, when I was on the board, at least. But he, he offered some great information. It was great to have him there. So, thank you if you're, you're watching from home.
Alrighty. Any other questions or comments from board? Alrighty. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by, no, sorry, we don't.
Mrs. Laura?
On the wrong page. Apologize. Motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6J, Approval of Stamoski Park Lease Extension with the City of Livonia.
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the lease extension to June 30, 2016, for the city of Livonia at Stamoski Park. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this for us?
Yes, thank you very much. We have a lease with the city of Livonia that is Stamoski Park, which you'll recall, we talked about, is also called Veterans Park, and is up near the Frost area. This is a lease that we have had with them. In other words, the city leases that particular park from Livonia Public Schools. That began in 2000. Those have been five-year renewals. The last time this was renewed was 2011. It's maybe obviously been a very nice agreement with the city of Livonia to have that opportunity to provide that public park for the community, and we would recommend that we renew this lease.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. Should that read 2021?
It's an extension of 2016.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Should it read 2021?
We can make it in the minutes.
Good catch.
Yes. We have an amended motion that, Mrs. McDonald, will you read the amended motion then with the 2021?
Sure, absolutely. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the lease extension to June 30, 2021, for the city of Livonia at Stamoski Park.
Support.
We have an amended motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any of your questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role on the amended motion?
Yeah, sorry, who is, Mrs. McDonald?
The amended motion, again, is brought forth by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And seeing as the amended motion is carried, there's no need for us to address the first motion any longer. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 6K, Approval of Amendment to Offer, I'm sorry, Approval of Amendment to Offer to Purchase Real Estate, Washington. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve a resolution for the Third Amendment to the Sale of Property to Reno, Jay, and Leo Sauve, on behalf of an entity to be formed for 9449 Hicks Road Livonia, Michigan property, also known as Washington property, and also move that the Board of Education authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to execute the Third Amendment and any documents necessary and incidental to the sale.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Ms. Abby, would you address this for us, please?
Yes, thank you very much. As you know, what you have attached here, the Third Amendment to Offer to Purchase Real Estate, is a revised offer from the Sauves on the Washington property. As you know, they have reduced their offer to 810,000 from 900,000. The developer has incurred unknown costs as it relates to the property itself. Their estimates are, are around $300,000. We have been working with our consultant, Mr. Bowman, at Great Northern Consulting, as well as our attorney from Clark Hill, to determine if that was a reasonable offer based on what their knowledge is of that site. They do agree that there are some infrastructure issues and some other issues as, as it relates to finalizing the development of that property that make that offer appear reasonable. I'll also remind the Board of Education that this offer revised is still higher than our second-low bidder, and still higher than our original estimates when we had, some time ago, talked about putting that property up for sale, and had looked at a number of lots and, and what we thought a developer might offer us for that property. Again, we do feel that it, we've taken some time to look at the offer, determine that their expenses, as it relates to this property, additional expenses, weren't known at the time that the offer was made, and they do make sense, and we do fear, believe that it's a fair offer, and that we would recommend approving this.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the superintendent or the board?
I just wanted to make a, a quick comment about how pleased we are to be moving forward with this. I wanted to thank Ms. Abby for her, her continued diligence on this, and really, as you may recall, we had members of the Washington community come and share with the Board of Education some of their thoughts, when they knew that we were looking to sell this property, and some of the things that were shared with us as being highest priority would be that this continues to, to strengthen the residential area, that there were some green space opportunities for families to enjoy as well, and that overall it be an aesthetically pleasing development. And I'm, I'm very, very pleased that, that the district has been able to enter into this partnership. Certainly, that was part of the RFP that Ms. Abby and Mr. Bowman prepared, and it has certainly been our intent to have that be an area that, again, enhances the area on the old Washington property, and certainly, we're pleased that it meets many of those tenants shared with us from the community. So, we're, we're pleased to partner on this, and we're, we're happy to be having this move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
I just want to remind the audience, it's, it's been a while, but this was money that we, we budgeted for this year to prevent us from making already severe cuts less severe. So, this is something that we're eager to, to do, because it'll mean, at least I am, it'll mean some great opportunities for, for new homes, but also because it, it does help alleviate a little bit of that pressure that we're feeling.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. As we all know, we've talked a lot about this project over the past few months, and I'd like to thank the city of Livonia, City Council, and the Planning Commission for all their hard work with us, and this is just such a win-win for all of us. And this is just such a win-win for all of us. It'll be excellent to see this housing project come to be and a great addition to our community. And thank you for everyone for working so hard on this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Board?
I too would like to thank all those who have worked on this project. It's starting with our community who came and talked to us at forums, saying that they would like us to look at cost containment and revenue enhancement ideas. And some folks in our community who are saying that if we have pieces of property that we're not utilizing for the school district and we're not going to utilize them in anywhere in the foreseeable future, that we allow those to be developed. We know that the Livonia Public Schools District area, it has a shortage of land available for homes and a lot of families who would like to move in. And this is going to afford us the opportunity for over 40 homes and a park to come into that area, which is, as several folks have said, is going to be a real asset to the community. So, I'd like to thank those of us in the district. There are many, our Superintendent, Ms. Abby, many folks in our administrative team who have worked very hard to make this come to fruition. So, it's instead of a vacant piece of property in a building that's not being used, we have homes for families and a park coming in. So, congratulations to Livonia Public Schools and to the community for working well together with the city to make this happen. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Abby, for obviously handling a great deal of work in a variety of areas.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Ms. Abby's first expertise was in accounting, but your field has grown exponentially. I'm sure Stormwater Resolutions was not in your college.
It was not on the CPA exam.
No, no. But thank you for handling so many of these things for us, along with your whole department.
Welcome.
The next item on our agenda is Item 8A, I'm sorry, 7A, I corrected myself. Personnel Matters, A is Leave of Absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and approve the request for a leave of absence listed below. Larissa Burke, effective May 12, 2016.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mr. Francis, could you address this item for us, please?
Yes, President Burton. Per the Board's agreement with the Livonia Education Association, these types of leaves are allowed and we do recommend that the Board approves this particular leave.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7B, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Carol Ashworth, Linda Elin, Denise Holbrook, Eric McCarrollen, Kimberly Marlowe, Lawrence Novak, Bradley Pearson, Linda Petrowski, Susan Strickland, and Janice Wackowski.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Mr. Francis, would you address this for us, please?
Thank you, President Burton. These employees represent nearly 257 years of experience with the district, which is incredible when you say it out loud. One specifically has more than 44 years. And we're looking at teachers, paraprofessionals, IT staff, just a variety of employees that have worked for the district diligently and for many, many years. So, we wish them very well in their retirement and thank them for their years of service with us.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
Just thank you.
Yes, please. Yes, I heartily thank you for your years of service. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7C, Sympathy Resolution. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached sympathy resolution for the family of Angela Girode.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Oakwood, would you like to address this item for us?
I would. We are certainly saddened to lose one of our staff members in Livonia Public Schools. Angela loved working at Churchill High School. After fighting breast cancer, she returned to work only to develop brain cancer. And, but this brave woman worked Monday through Thursday and then had her chemo treatments on her day off on Friday. And even as her health declined, her focus was always focused on continuing to work and to be there for the kids. She was a devoted employee with a wonderful work ethic. So, we certainly extend our deepest condolences to her family and to her colleagues at Churchill.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the Board? And again, the sympathy of the Board of Education goes to Angela's family and her coworkers. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 8 is our next item on the agenda, Reports from the Superintendent. Mrs. Oakwood?
Thank you, President Burton. I have a few things I'd like to update you and the community on. First of all, I just can't help but acknowledge from the start of our meeting, I think I heard the word "wow" a number of times exclaimed in the crowd. And we went from our artists to our athletes to our academic scholars. There is no way you could sit here this evening and not be so tremendously proud of our students, certainly of our staff and of the parents of those folks who are here this evening. What a special night. Thank you to, shout out to Mrs. Jenkins for coordinating all of that. A lot goes behind the scenes in getting all those folks here and preparing all of that information. But we are continuously impressed with the efforts of our students and I thought we really ran the continuum this evening. And again, these are the reasons why we do what we do. And we know that part of the 1,900 folks who are LPS help to bring about that success and certainly the families who stand beside us and partner with us are an important piece of that as well. So, congratulations to them. I think I heard someone mention earlier about the Fine Arts Festival. I just wanted to make a mention that our art teachers have worked tirelessly. Mrs. Wozniak can attest to how many wonderful pieces were dropped off in our office over the past couple of weeks. That will be open throughout April. So, if you have not had an opportunity to head over there, the displays are throughout the first floor, the second floor, and in the gallery. So, please take a moment to enjoy our artists ranging from kindergarten all the way through soon-to-be graduates. And again, thank you to our art teachers for helping facilitate that work. There's a lot that goes into the matting and the selecting and getting those pieces over and not an easy decision. As I looked at many of those pieces, I thought, I'm not quite sure how the teachers are able to narrow it down to just those few. Last week, our high school students took the PSAT and for the first time took the SAT as part of a requirement from the state of Michigan. We also have our upper elementary and middle school folks starting the M-Step testing and our third and fourth grade students will be starting soon as well. So, thanks to our counselors and our teachers and our administrative staff for coordinating that. It was quite an organizational feat this year and certainly the number of requirements that go along with that are significant. And so, we know our students will continue to excel and we wish them well as they continue that testing. I had the pleasure of attending Livonia Rotary as a guest last week and we had one of our students, Curtis, acknowledged from the Livonia Career Technical Center for a vocational award. It was a wonderful opportunity to hear from him. He also is a student at the Career Technical Center in one of the media application programs. And he was also highlighted for a contest at the University of Michigan Dearborn where he and a partner created a mobile app on-site. I believe it was called Chem Lab and I believe it is available on the App Store if you are interested. And he won a scholarship for school, to the University of Michigan Dearborn for that. Again, it's just wonderful to see so many of our students excel. We had the pleasure of meeting his parents as well and so we thank the Rotary for acknowledging him for his efforts. And finally, I just wanted to have a quick follow-up for the community and for the Board of Education from our meeting on Monday. As you know, we had Plant Moran Cressa here and they started to share with us some of the work that came out of the enrollment study and the facility study. And so, we started today with our team of 45 stakeholders led by Ms. Abby and Mr. Archibald, who are co-chairing our facilities committee. So, we actually started down in this room and then it magically transformed back into the boardroom. But we had a great group here this evening and Mr. Wills took that group through the start of our work. So, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. As you know, our shared vision and our collective commitments drive all of our work and our efforts in this district. And there are some portions of our vision and our collective commitments that talk about the implementation of innovative ideas when we're talking about structural or operational changes, participative problem-solving and decision-making, and collaborative efforts to speak openly and to hear many voices. And I think this is one example of many in our district where we take the opportunity to work thoughtfully on decisions that have an impact on all of our students in our community. And so, I'd like to share with the community, if you may indulge me, what the goal and the objectives are of that committee. I think it's important that we spend just a short amount of time at each meeting in addition to the communications that we'll be sending out via email and on our website. So, the committee goal is to utilize a broad-based stakeholder team representing each school in our district to review and analyze the district enrollment and facility studies completed by Plant Moran Cressa in order to safeguard and conserve our district resources with great diligence. The committee objectives specifically, there are three. To explore and recommend options to the Board of Education and the Superintendent that increase the facility utilization at our elementary schools, moving toward a goal of 80% capacity, which actually is the industry standard recommended in Michigan. Recommendations for possible expansion of programs, consolidation of schools or facilities, or other options must include both the rationale and the potential impact, human, financial, community, et cetera, for each option. The second committee objective is to evaluate facility needs and the impact on pacing of projects for Phase 4 and Phase 5 of our bond planning. We will determine if all schools and non-K-12 facilities will be needed in the foreseeable future, thus need to be renovated. The third committee objective is to study the current operating locations for our pre-K, K-12, and post-secondary programs in order to determine if more optimal options exist within our currently-owned district facilities. So, again, utilizing our shared vision and beginning that work together with a committee that represents, again, every school in our district. We have parents, community members, teachers, parapro, secretary, building supervisor, administrators, operations folks, and central office staff on the committee. Additionally, one of the really remarkable pieces, not surprising because we know many of our folks have, wear many hats, but over, I believe, just about half of the committee members also are parents in the district in addition to, some were there solely as parents, but some are employees who are also parents. We had over a third who are actual graduates of Livonia Public Schools and many, many who are residents as well. So, we believe that we have a great group assembled and we are very committed to keeping our community and our staff apprised of this work. And so, we'll be doing that in a couple of different ways. We will have shortly in the next couple of weeks, a quick link uploaded onto our website that will include things like the PowerPoint information that we cover, some of the enrollment and facility information that Mr. Wills covered at our last meeting. We'll also have committee updates and the committee goals and objectives. And so, we believe it's very important that along this way, we're talking to our community about the purpose of this group and that we're continuing to update them throughout the process. So, again, thank you to Mr. Archibald and Ms. Abby for co-chairing that and for Plant Moran Cressa in being our partners with helping to facilitate this very important work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 9, Hearing from Board Members. And 9A is the First Reading of Board Policy JBA, Compulsory Attendance Ages and Placement of Students Transferring into Livonia Public Schools. This is a first reading, so we will not be taking a vote on this this evening. It requires two readings, so we will vote at our next voting meeting. Mrs. Oakwood, would you like to address this item for us?
Actually, we will have Mr. Archibald who.
Ah, I'm sorry.
Actually, we will have Mr. Archibald who will be covering these items for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald.
Thank you, Ms. Oakwood. Board Policy JBA pertaining to compulsory attendance ages. With this, we are actually combining Board Policy JBA and Board Policy JBB, which has to do with entry ages, so that all this related information is in one location. The changes pertaining to compulsory attendance age and early, or entry age are basically just updating these policies so that they reflect the current law under the revised school code.
This really, what your comments really pertain to both A and B, Item 9B, which is the removal of policy JBB for interns' age?
Correct.
Okay, we will vote on these two separately, but comments really roll together into one. Are there any questions or comments from the Board on this first item, JBA? I'm sorry, yes, JBA? Nope, already. We will not be taking a vote on it tonight. Are there any questions or comments on JBB, the removal of that policy? And again, for the benefit of the public, the JBB portions that are still valid are being rolled right into JBA. So, it'll be one place to look for this information. Any other questions on the removal of JBB? Alrighty. The next item on our agenda is Item 9C, First Reading of Board Policy JD, Student Discipline. This is a lengthy policy that, but we have a small change going in. Mr. Archibald, would you like to address it for us?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mrs. Burton. This is just an editorial change. Back in January of 2015, we revised our policy, our attendance policy and our homework policies, administrative procedures, so that we were no longer treating suspensions and unexcused absences alike with respect to credit for work missed during an absence. And this particular change is on Page 10 of the discipline policy and it was simply an oversight. And so, we would like to change the information again now to reflect, so we're no longer referring to suspensions as unexcused absences. Again, this has been in practice since January of 2015. This is just a little cleanup work.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the Board on this item? Alrighty. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 9D, Hearing from Board Members. It has been the practice of this Board as opposed to having seven individuals. Thank many folks who have approached the Board this evening, to have one Board member take care of those thank-yous for us. By all means afterward, other Board members are certainly welcome to add whatever comments they would like for the evening. This evening, Mr. Johnson will be taking care of that for us. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. I think Superintendent Oakwood put a mind meld on me tonight because she's already hit on some of the things. This was a really fun-filled night with all our honorees, beginning with our art students. I mean, you just look at this stuff and see the talent that these young students have. And when you sit here and you listen to the, our five National Merit Scholars sitting at this board table, I feel quite inadequate to listen what the potential is for these young adults, listening to how many. young adults, listening to how many of them are going to the Wharton School. I mean, you can't get any better than that for business. And to listen to 36 on ACTs, you know, I thought my 14 was pretty good. But I can't hold a candle to these students. And it's really a testament to not only the students, but their teachers as well, that keep them, that push them to be the best that they can be. So, we need to thank the teachers as well. When you look at our student athletes, again, and President Burton, you pointed it out, that we have tremendous coaches throughout this district, and our coaches are just as concerned with how our students do as individuals and in the classroom as well as they do on the field of battle. And that's a real testament to them as well. We have another Golden Apple winner to add to the orchard. And, you know, she epitomizes what our Golden Apple winners are because the first thing she did was thank all those people that had nominated her and put her there. That's what we see, you know, day in and day out from our employees. They're always willing to give someone else the credit, even though they're the ones who are getting the accolades, and that is just tremendous. I want to give a shout-out and a congratulations to our robotics team. They went up to Sioux St. Marie, drove all the way up to Sioux St. Marie and won that competition. Absolutely tremendous. And anybody who watches Channel 32, they have a high school sports program, and our robotics team was on that sports team, on that sports report. And they were so excited on how, in that competition at the very end, that the Livonia Warriors used their defense to win the competition. So, it was absolutely outstanding to see what they've done throughout this year, and they've only gotten better as the year has progressed. I want to thank Cabinet, because we sit here at this table, and it looks so easy, what we do, but it's only because of the information that you provide to us, week in and week out, the staff, the Cabinet. Mrs. Wozniak, she puts all of this together for us. It makes our job a whole lot easier, and I want to thank all of you for participating and getting us that information to help us. Want to thank our retiring teachers. As Mr. Francis said, you know, we've got 256.8 years. There were 10 of them. My math isn't that great, but that comes to 25.68 years per retiree. That's a lot of experience that we're losing, and I don't know how you replace that. So, congratulations to them. And President Burton, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other board members who would like to have any comments this evening? Mr. Centers?
I'd just like to acknowledge Nino Monet, who is a graduate of Franklin High School, someone that Janice and I know really well. He was elected student body president of Harvard University.
Wow.
So, that happened just this last week. So, that's quite the accomplishment. So, his family still live in Livonia, so if you see them around, congratulate them because that's pretty spectacular.
That's excellent. Anybody else have any comments this evening they'd like to share? Seeing none, thank you to all the folks who had a part in putting together, as Mr. Johnson said, a really lengthy agenda. A lot of work went into, culminating into approvals this evening. We thank you all very, very much. Seeing nothing else left on our agenda, we are now adjourned. Have a nice evening. Thank you.